Order at six oh one P M. Right, just start with having invitation. If you would please buy your heads. Do you have any follow the Lord we come to you as humble as we know how? Lord, we thank you for a day that wasn't promised to us, Lord. Lord, we thank you for this meeting. We ask everything that is said and done be pleasing in your sight. Do that which you should have us to do for the betterment of Duncanville and the betterment for our individual self, our families and businesses here in Duncanville. Ladies and God is in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Do you will please stand in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Okay. First thing on our agenda is citizens public forum. To submit a comment via email for and for your comments to be read, the following information is required. Submit a comment about four P M. on Monday, July twenty second, twenty twenty four. Email jeremiah.brewer@duncanville texas dot gov. Email title, public comment, July twenty second, twenty twenty four. First and last name and address. Jeremiah, do we have anyone?
No.
No public comment?
No, sir. Thank you.
Uh, next, uh, receive director's report. And if you don't mind, Mr. Barrera.
Yes.
I'd like to actually introduce it for those of you who have not had an opportunity. Uh, Mr. Victor Barrera is our new, uh, Director of Economic Development. And, um, I can honestly say he's come, he's come in, hit the ground running. Uh, we're very pleased in regards to that, actually brought him from North Chicago. And so if you don't mind, uh, give me.
City of Chicago?
Uh, the city of Chicago. Uh, prior to this role, I was the Community and Economic Development for the city of North Chicago. Uh, just north. Okay. I was from Marquinhos.
Okay. See, and I didn't know there's a thing, I didn't know there's this thing is that when he said North Chicago, I thought like North Dallas. I like, he's proud of North Chicago. Yeah, exactly. So, yes, if you don't mind.
Yeah, absolutely, not at all. Good evening. Uh, my name is Victor Barrera. I'm the new Economic Development Director for the city of Duncanville. Uh, come from the city of Chicago, born and raised. So this is the first time, uh, leaving my hometown. So this is a bit of a new experience for me, uh, learning how, uh, things are done. One, in Texas, the Texas way, and two, the Duncanville way. So it's been a heck of a ride. This is, uh, this would be my third week, uh, on the job. My first board meeting, so be, uh, I'd ask for your patience and understanding and be, be gentle with me on this first meeting. Uh, as I'm learning, as I'm learning the ropes, but I'm excited to be here. It's an, it's an honor and a privilege to be working for the city of Duncanville. And, um, there's many great things that we're working on, uh, behind the scenes that I hope to shortly, uh, be sharing with, with the board and with the general public. Thank you.
Anything under direct?
Um, yeah, just a few things that I would share with everyone is that we have, over the course of the last few weeks, been doing more of an effort or for that matter, trying to go out there and visit with the business community. Uh, we've made it a goal to visit at least one business per week and provide, uh, provide the city staff with a, a regular report of the outcome of that, of that visit. Uh, what we'd like to do is moving forward, we're not prepared to do that this evening, but moving forward, we'd like to share, uh, some of the outcomes of those business visits and some of the feedback that we have, uh, received as a result of those visits. We will also be posting those visits on, uh, on the city's website as part of the regular, uh, weekly, uh, managers' report. Um, and in every opportunity, we would do our best to support our local business. So for example, this evening, we have, the food has been provided by, uh, One Stop. It's a new business in the community. And again, we want to do more of that showcase and support our local businesses. Uh, that's one thing that we're working on. Two, uh, we're working on updating or revising, uh, giving the economic development webpage, uh, revised, fresh, new look. Uh, what we have found is that there's a lot of information on the website, which is good, but it's, it's too busy. It, it, um, Ms. Day, how did you put it? It's not.
Lots of information, not a lot of navigation. Gives you a lot of information, but it doesn't tell you how to get anything done. So we're simplifying it, so it's, it's easier to, I want to open a business, this is click this button, click this button, here's the information you need, this is what you need to do, step one, step two, step three, things of that nature, so.
So we made some changes this part, but there's more, there's more to come. Uh, we hope that sometime down the road, we will share with you the, the final product. Um, and I think that's it for now.
Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Thank you.
As, as I said before, has come to town, hit the ground running, relationships, understanding things going on. Appreciate you very much.
Thank you very much. Look forward to working with you.
Uh, item number three, briefings and presentations. Uh, item A, Pink Diamond Community Bike Ride, uh, presentation, Mark D. Cook, Project Representative.
Mr. President and Lord, I will leave the floor for a second to two of our other members and, uh, Karen Hodges-Cooks will present.
Good evening. Um, I'm one of the race directors, Karen Hodges-Cooks. And, uh, I want to thank you, first of all, Economic Development Board, for your support on last year's bike ride and health fair. Um, and before I go into further detail, we do have a short, uh, video, uh, from last year's event. We had, um, I was getting it set up, we had approximately a hundred and seventy cyclists come out, as well as we had, uh, in conjunction with our health fair, we had a lot of, what, forty vendors? And a, and a fifty-two vendors, sorry. And very well, uh, and it was very well received by the community. So, um, our goal in bringing this to Duncanville is to promote, uh, wellness and fitness. It's not just about the cyclists, uh, in the community. And I think we're ready.
I don't know the name of the street, uh, but it was within the first ten miles.
Okay.
There's one hill.
Huh?
Man, that was crazy.
Okay.
I said, what?
What, whatever, what was it? Under Glen.
Under Glen.
Okay.
Man, I thought about it about ten different times, get off this bike and just push. But I said, no, I gotta push through, so I made it through, rest for a little bit, got back on my bike, headed on in.
Hi, I'm Evan Richardson.
Richardson.
Love the hills.
Love the hills.
Love the wind.
All right.
And I'm Rachel, I'm in Flowerman.
Flowerman.
Love the beautiful day, no clouds in the sky.
Love it, love it, love it.
I'm Scott, and I love the scenery.
Ride the ride. So what job, what job, come back, what job, do it again?
Yeah.
Okay, good deal.
I'll talk tomorrow.
All right, thank you. Um, this year, our goal is to have at least two hundred cyclists. So we've already started, uh, marketing, uh, in that area. And last year, as I'm not sure if you saw, we had, uh, a riot leader was from W F A A, uh, leading the ride. Um, so, and this year, we'll have the cycling piece as well. We have routes, uh, we have a family ride that's more for community involvement. And then we have a fifteen, which has a riot leader. We have a thirty mile ride route, and then we have a fifty mile route for more, uh, experienced cyclists.
Did you say five-oh?
Five-oh. So, uh, and then again, we'll have, um, our health fair. And, and basically, the purpose of the ride, as I stated, is for wellness. And also, it allows us to support, um, a very good charity, uh, Pink Diamonds Survivors of Cancer. So once again, uh, we will, uh, make a proceed, uh, donation, uh, to the, to the organization as well. And, uh, I'll have, I have Ms. Lydia here, will give you more information. Uh, if you'll pull up the charity, uh, Ms. Lydia will give me more information on this.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm really pleased to be here and welcome, Mr. Barrera, to our city. And thank you, Mr. Govan, and the other members of the board for allowing us this opportunity to talk about Pink Diamonds Survivors of Cancer. Um, I'm not gonna take a real long time. I am a twenty-eight-year breast cancer survivor. I have metastatic breast cancer, uh, and it's triple negative. I brought you guys some information. Could you hand those out for, please, to our members?
Yeah, thank you, you're really good.
Here are some things and, and to our new director, please.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Um, if you look in the folder, you'll see, this is the, the first picture of the Pink Diamonds individuals. These are women who are part of our, our Pink Diamonds group. And, uh, they are very actively engaged in a number of things beyond the breast cancer. And I know your first thing people grabbing are those knockers. And I'm gonna tell you what those are in just a minute. Uh, we have a number of other things that we do other than the health fair. The health fair last year was tremendously successful. We had fifty mammograms, uh, that were designated for us, our health fair. It's really hard to get people, they say, to do, uh, mammograms, but we didn't have any problems. We didn't have enough, uh, mammograms for the number of people who wanted to. Of the fifty that we did have, we found three women who had breast cancer.
Oh, wow.
So that draws attention to the need for this kind of event, especially in our community. We want to make sure we don't have people walking around with breast cancer. And you know what's really sad? Once every two minutes, a woman is diagnosed with breast cancer. And I know that seems almost impossible, but check the facts, it's true. Once every two minutes, somebody, a woman or a man, because men can have breast cancer too. Uh, in this folder, you will see something that says knitted knockers at the top of it. What you have in this bag is something that we provide to, it's, oh, I think there may be eight or nine on here, but we actually now provide these to twelve healthcare facilities, hospitals and healthcare. What these are, prosthesis. They replace those old phone inserts for women who've had mastectomies. And if you fill them, you can take them out and fill them, guys. They're very soft, you can swim, and, and wait a minute, and our chair is doing his in the back.
Yeah, compliment him, compliment him.
Okay, but anyway, we provide these, this is an international, uh, affair that we do. We provide these, we're the largest providers in the Dallas metroplex. We do Mansfield, in addition to Duncanville, to Soto, Cedar Hill, and all of our, all of the Dallas. We provide these knitted knockers to women who have had prosthesis and, and do not have reconstruction. Okay? And more and more women are electing not to have reconstruction. And I have had reconstruction, and I'm one of those women who agree. That is not a good thing. Uh, additionally, we provide to women at no charge, and all of these are free. I mean, we don't charge for the prosthesis, for the knitted knockers. They are free, we give them away, and we are constantly replenishing. We have a book called Just Diagnosed that has been a tremendous, uh, guide for women who have just been diagnosed with breast cancer. Gives them all the terminology they need to know. It tells them about resources they can have. It is such a good guide. It tells them about the chemo drugs they take, and it, it's just invaluable. So we give these to all of our newly diagnosed people, and that's part of our mission as well. Um, we do one-on-one, we give breast cancer wreaths every September and October. We will be making breast cancer wreaths on the seventeenth of August. Then we will start, uh, distributing in September and October. And again, those are free. And if anybody would like to join us and help us make these wreaths, we'll be more than glad to, uh, welcome you. Uh, the health fair, we've got the cards out already. It's gonna be on the twelfth of October, and it's gonna be at the same location that it was last year at the Hopkins Senior Citizen Center. Uh, the crowd we had last year was tremendous. We have decided this year to cut back on the number of vendors because the space really was overwhelmed by the number of people that we had there. So we're gonna do more, we're gonna do more targeted, uh, healthcare providers, uh, for our community. But we do look forward to, uh, to bringing all of these resources to our community so that people who cannot perhaps afford these services can receive them. We were founded, and I'm the founder of it, because I had so many friends who were dying of breast cancer. I have lived twenty-eight years of triple negative breast cancer and have had three five-year life chef, shelf life diagnoses given to me because of the type of breast cancer I had. But I thank God and great insurance. The problem with most women who die from breast cancer is they don't have great insurance. Great insurance is a prerequisite. And in our state, unfortunately, there are too many women without insurance. I don't know whether it's because we don't have Medicaid expansion or whatever the reason is, we have women. And so we are very proud of the fact that we do raise money to give to, for treatment and for research. The research dollars usually comes from our bike ride that we give to Coleman. Coleman is the only source for research that's out there. And then we give money to other groups that provide diagnostic testing, chemo, uh, assistance, all of the things that are needed. It's one thing to get diagnosed that you have breast cancer. Mammograms are easy to come by. But when you have to get diagnosed, when you have to get diagnostic testing, when you have to get biopsies, and when you have to have chemo. I had chemo that was as much as sixty-five dollars in, sixty-five thousand dollars in infusion. And it's incredible to believe that's, that that kind of drug is out there. But it saves lives. So, uh, I do appreciate the time you guys have allowed it for us today and that you could assist us in any way on this mission. We greatly appreciate it. And I'm gonna sit down so that, uh, Mark can get up and talk. Is there anybody else who need any knockers?
I don't think I do.
You want one?
Just a folder?
Just one folder, okay.
Thought I'd wrap this up really quickly, and Mark Cooks, uh, founder of the bike ride for Ms. Linda. And the way, the reason I got started working with Ms. Linda, it's since when I was, when I sat on the council, she was asking for me to come and speak to her group. And, and when I spoke to her group about, they were, it was holding here at, at, in Park, in Armstrong Park. And when I spoke to her group and I saw the, what they were doing and all the things that they were giving back to the community, my first reaction is, what can I do to help? And so since I liked cycling, I thought, what a great way to cycle and to help raise funds for the organization. So we started out with me being the first cyclist, and I rode up and down Main Street and came back. The next time we had, we had the twenty-five, and then we kept, it just kept moving. And so Karen and I would go to, we have been, it's still going, to all of these cities, all cities, asking them to come participate in the Pink Diamond Bike Ride. We have Formersville, without any knowing, Formersville simply existed somewhere. McKinney, Flowerman, Richardson, Richthof Falls, Cleveland, Parrish, Texas, Austin and Houston. And so all of those are coming into our local city. And so as we continue to press up on them the reason to come, people are just signing up automatically. And so that's why we're asking for your help, because we like to promote our city in Duncanville, but also promote the Pink Diamond Breast Cancer Survivors. Uh, with that, we also offer, this year, we're offering a hotel stay for a couple of people that's coming in to stay, uh, still who locally is gonna help set up. So we have a couple of hotel rooms we're gonna reserve for that as well. And then, uh, last but not least, TechStop. I, I reached out to TechStop and said, how can you help us, uh, with the bike riding and, and the information? TechStop said, we can't give you any money, but what we can give you is that we're gonna provide safety vests and free bike helmets to anyone who, who attends. And I think they sent, they gave over two hundred helmets and vests out, and they're gonna, they're gonna come again and do that, uh, again for us this year. So with that, uh, we are already thinking about what's our next year plan. Next year will be five years we'll be doing this. And so our goal is to have five hundred riders. The more riders, the more money we can give back to the Pink Diamonds, uh, Survivors of Cancer. So we're asking you to participate. How, uh, you can give to the organization, uh, it can go straight to, it can go straight to our survivors, and some of our cyclists will normally do that. Uh, you can participate as a volunteer. We love to have volunteers to greet our guests, as you can tell, they're from all around, and love coming back, and so we're asking you to come do it. And then I'll end where, uh, this is the, maybe the first cycling event that we've had in Duncanville. But let me just share with you that Cedar Hill has a ride, uh, that eight hundred riders come from all over for Cedar Hill. And those riders, and those funds go to the Rotary Club, right? And so we're just asking, we're, if five years is our next year, we're gonna go ask, we're gonna look for five hundred cyclists and increase our health fair as well to kind of continue to give back, to help this great organization to succeed. So thank y'all for the time, and we'll open up any questions, or we'll leave it for, leave it for Mr. President.
Anybody, members, anybody have any questions? Cause I think one of your questions, what is your ask of us?
Your ask of us is to be a ti, a title sponsor. Uh, you sponsored last year, uh, as one of our sponsors, but we're assuming you're a title sponsor this year. And the title sponsoring is a fifteen thousand dollar ask for, for a title sponsorship. And you may ask, you know what, I mean, if I could share those funds that we use to promote the event inside and outside of the city. Uh, it's to take care of our, our major budget is our police protection. So as you can wear, the safety is very important to us. So we're, we'll have to hire Duncanville Police as well as outside police to protect our cyclists as they ride. We shouldn't be off the streets of Duncanville, probably about eleven o'clock, we hope, is what we're asking. The ride starts about eight-thirty. And so the, the major cost is going to be, you know, promoting it as well as our police safety.
Is A L.'s largest cost, I'm assuming?
Say it again.
A L.'s largest cost.
That's our largest cost, that's correct.
So as part of the, like, permit application, that's included?
Yeah, everything. Right. Of course, as we go through other cities, it's worth that, that means a lot. So as you talked about, the fifty mile ride that we're gonna convince Kenneth to go on, in a car, in a car. But, but with that, actually, last year, uh, as last year councilman, Greg Keteris, Dan Merrick Keteris, one of the things he said to me earlier in his process, he was what we call a sag driver. And so he had his truck, anybody that couldn't make it, he would put them in his truck and bring them back. And one thing him and I talked about earlier, earlier last year, he said, Mark, regardless how this turns out, I want to make sure that I'm a part of this, uh, event again. And so he said, sign up, I want to be a sag driver again. Other questions?
Do you have this flyer in Spanish as well?
Good question, I knew you was gonna ask that question, and, and we're also gonna run out before you ask that, but no, we are working on, on the Spanish version of that. But yes, we'll have that out as well. If not, it'll be interpreted on the website.
It is being done.
Okay, say it down the way. Thank you.
So is the bike race on October twelfth?
Yes, the, the entire event is on October twelfth. The bike ra, the bike event starts, it's not a race, so it's a ride, it's a rally. It starts about eight-thirty. And when I tell you there was a sight to see, to see all, a whole parking lot filled up, uh, about eight-thirty, right about nine o'clock, the health fair would kick off. And tremendous event, I mean, Ms. Ms. Lydia, Ms. Lydia had, uh, a lot of elected officials all around the city coming to stop during the health fair. I couldn't get them on the bike, but she can get them in the health fair.
So last year, how many riders did you have?
A hundred, a hundred and seventy-five, and we kept some drop out from there, a hundred and seventy-five registered.
What, what are you anticipating this year, two?
We're just saying about two hundred. And we can get more, uh, we, we're definitely getting more. Duncanville I S D, we also partnered with them. And so they, they also asked, actually, the principal called today and asked, how can they get involved and how can they get their students involved? But we're actually, what I didn't say, is a part of that, and a part of your sponsorship, it goes to giving at least, I think it says five or ten bicycles out to students, needy students. And so it's not just we're giving in, we also give back out to our students in Duncanville as well. And the print, the, the counselors are the ones that's, that will select the student that receives the cycle. And one unique part of that last year, again, we didn't have a, we didn't have a part of it, but the, the ones that received the bikes last year, it was ten bikes gave away. Uh, half of those has experienced, uh, some type of cancer in their family. And so it just matched up, and it, but we didn't ask for that criteria.
Any other questions, comments, observations from the board? Thank you, sir.
No, thank y'all for allowing the participation. We're gonna leave now, so if you have any questions for us, uh, I'll be available.
Thank you, sir.
You need to call me by mail.
Item B, Duncanville Arts Commission Presentation, Ron Thompson, Board President.
Hi. Hey, everybody. My name, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, my name is Ron Thompson. If you don't know me, I'm Chair of the Arts Commission, we're a brand new commission. We are just about a year and a half old. Um, and one of the first things we did, first, we rattled out of the box, is we created an, an arts and business mixer. The idea is we've got to start identifying who our stakeholders are gonna be. Um, uh, our very first one was held, uh, around Christmas time of last year, and we had about two hundred people show up. Um, I'm here today to ask for eight thousand dollars, a little bit of housekeeping. We had a, a spring mixer I'll talk about, um, we've already had in May. We're playing another one for the summer and fall. So the purpose of this, like I said, this is the first thing that we did as a brand new commission. The idea is to bring everybody together, the community, local artists and two businesses who care about the arts. Um, and, and to have the conversations that you need to talk about how the arts are both an economic, uh, driver and a community builder. Our approach was to reach out to businesses who are next door to one another and host arts-focused events between the neighboring businesses. The idea is to highlight local and regional artists, uh, highlight local businesses, create a fun and inclusive space, platform for conversations. And what the Arts Commission does is we handle all the logistics, the marketing, the stakeholder building, the review and the response. And let me tell you, it is a lot of work. Um, today, we've had two, uh, two mixers. The first, um, in December was Day Drake Lounge and Smokey D's Barbecue. Recently, we ate, uh, had it at Pink Oak and Takeout Burger. Um, attendance, we scale for scope, this eighty's a wrong number, I spoke with Tiffany Wyatt, she's our lead on this. Um, for the, for the one we had in December, we had close to two hundred people approach. And for the one we had in the spring, we had about a hundred and fifty people show up. Um, we're learning to sort of, uh, focus in on genre a little bit. Our, our first mixer in the, uh, Christmas was basically, we try to cram as much art experience into two buildings as absolutely possible. And, uh, uh, the, the most recent one, it was more about visual art and the spoken word. Um, we're also reaching out to, to, to be able to accommodate businesses with, with different capacities, different sizes. Um, so altogether, we've had live painting demos, we've had art on display, we've had live music, we've had a DJ, we've had music technology, we have art net technology, we've had poetry and spoken word, we have portals for people to give feedback, some are creative, some are just a, um, a, a scan code. And then we use a lot of shared marketing network opportunities, host artists, guests. You'll find, uh, what we learned is, is, is during, uh, December, it was, um, um, there, there were a lot of people running for various offices. And we were flooded with people running for offices and we had people starting businesses, everybody brings their business cards. And the cool thing about it is the people who bring them there is artists. It's really important, particularly for community and economic development to recognize that artists are entrepreneurs. Uh, we have community partners along the way, we build relationships with, uh, folks who are outside of this. The, uh, in, in Christmas, the, the Duncanville Public, uh, the Duncanville Police Department Santa Cop, uh, Officer Arias, we absolutely packed her cruiser, we thought we're gonna have to get another car out. The public library is a little free pantry, there was so much food, we absolutely stuffed it. And she said it's nev- they said it's never been this full. Uh, the Duncanville Community Theater and through this activity, an organization called Arts and Education has emerged. And it's where educators from the Duncanville ISD show up to our events and find out where the gaps are in education. Um, we're getting to be very popular in these events, so on the website, this is the city website, the Arts Commission, um, panel. And we have interest cards, so local businesses who want to host our events, uh, will come here and we, and, and fill them out. Um, so this is our most recent one in spring, we have a lot of branding people on the Arts Commission, so we always look good. Um, Black Caesar has turned out to be an amazing friend of the Arts Commission. And you can see how we wanna make sure that the City of Duncanville, uh, Economic Development and, uh, uh, of course, our logos, everybody's logo is, 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 is prominent. Uh, I showed this, we have a lot of collateral. Um, this is, I'm sorry, thank you. Um, so we have, we have the step and repeat, a great thing, you know, we live in a world where everything has to be Instagrammable. And, uh, so there's lots of things that we leave for people to get their picture taken in front of. And you ever come to our events, you'll see, you're asked to get your picture taken a lot. So you'll see again, we, uh, uh, it's, it's our logo, your logo and the City of Duncanville's logo. Um, you can see that this is the one for the spring. Uh, the viability of this is a little different, the one in Christmas, it was loud and celebratory, this is a lot of spoken word and painting demonstrations, uh, because Pink Oak is, is a, is a, is a retail paint, when people go and, and have social events around painting. It was, uh, it was more intimate and you got to, to talk to people more intimately. Uh, these are just some random pictures that, from our spring, so you can get an idea. It's, it's really fun, so there, next door, there's a, a Takeout Burger, between Takeout Burger and Pink Oak, people are just going back and forth. Um, and then there's outdoor space where people congregate, like I said, in those two spaces, we had, uh, about a hundred and fifty-ish people. Uh, and again, this is, we had, so live painting demonstrations, everybody gets a chance to, 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 uh, uh, get in front of a canvas, everybody had a chance to get in front of a microphone. Um, having Black Caesar as, as the, 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 the lead title person there brought a lot of, uh, of e- e- excitement. And again, this is meant to be, how do we talk about arts as an economic driver and a community building? So understand, everybody here had a business card, it was promoting, uh, what they were doing and it's fun, it is crazy fun. Um, I dropped these just in here. So, you know, this is an, this is an example, when I show you, we have these rings. So we also have a photographer on site, but we also have, everybody has a chance to stick their phone there and take a picture. Uh, we've had, in, in as many different ways as we can combine art and technology, man, we try to do it. And, and people love it, people love it. So the cool thing about it is, uh, we encourage people to tag the city. So we're asking them to tag whatever logo they see, they tag themselves, their friends see it. We're developing a hashtag, hashtag Duncanville Arts, used everywhere you go. Uh, and you can see, as this was, uh, she was doing a demonstration and, and, and where this is a little different, attendees could actually look over the shoulder and, and, and figure like, hey, I wanna start taking, uh, classes here at Pink Oak. And we also had opportunities for, uh, local and regional poets to, to, uh, to, uh, perform. And if you've never seen any sort of spoken word or poetry exhibition, I encourage you to do it. It's not always a wordsworth and it's very exciting. Um, so I was asked to be brief and I can be brief. It's really important to me also to let you guys know, as a brand new commission, if you've been paying attention, Arts Commission has been moving at lightning speed. You guys were the first to get our back. And so I cannot thank you enough for everything you've done to support the Arts Commission, because we're lea- moving at lightning speed because of you guys. And we appreciate it, and so I'll stand for questions.
Would you, any questions, comments, observations?
Yes, sir.
Y'all have a designated staff person with the city?
Alex Hamby. So we're really, so one of the things, so we have, uh, Tiffany Wyatt owns an event marketing company in town. We have, uh, uh, Sarah Messiah, she works for a public relations firm. We have, uh, two freelance artists and we have, um, Alex Hamby. So one of the great things is we have really built-in branding people. And so we're very fortunate, of course, Alex is, um, he's on top of all of it.
Yeah, but y'all have, y'all have a support person at the city.
Yeah, we, we, well, honestly, we've had city staff move mountains for us. Alex is our guy and there has never been an opportunity that we haven't reached out to people and say, can you help us do this, can you help us do this? Everybody steps up.
Yes, my question is, you've done a couple of events now, what have some lessons learned that you've picked up from the first two that you didn't wanna strive for?
We've gotta start developing, uh, uh, metrics and way we track metrics. Uh, so one of the things that's really important to me is we're, we're doing all this and if it's meant to encourage business, there's, some of this metrics is sort of long-term, it's sort of cyclical. So if, 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 and, and this is where we need more support from economic development to help us put some people in places for this. Um, and we're gonna reach out to, uh, Community Engagement Board perhaps to help us as well. But so for example, um, th- an, an event in May, obviously lots of people come, there's a lot of energy, there's gonna be a bump. But what does that bump mean long-term? What does that bump mean for the next quarter? What does that bump mean for the next, uh, year? Um, so that's kind of metrics that we wanna be able to come back and say, long-term, this is a result we saw. Uh, we have a lot, a lot of artists of various kinds and we try to encourage and, and get people aware of how you can hire artists like this or how artists can activate your business like this. And so we really do need to lean into, to metrics, uh, regarding like our, our i- artists getting hired. Um, and, and Arts Commission has listened, so we have a resident here, when we very first started, she said, I saw this group bring them to Duncanville and I've been trying for the past eighteen months to bring them to Duncanville. So, um, metrics building. And, and the challenge with that is every business tracks their receipts differently. So, and, and this is why we need to engage like the Community Engagement Board to figure out, or, um, how do we create a universal model in which to track metrics for this activity? What is it, what does this mean long-term? Is there, obviously there's a momentarily bump, but is it extended? Is there a way to, is there a way that we can extend this bump? Um, is there a way that we can report back to you guys who are the boards and commissions and, and say, okay, this is what we're finding is the businesses are gonna need a little more of this, or the arts are gonna need more of this. But that's probably the one thing that I think would benefit if we really leaned into it.
Uh, one more, one more question?
Yes.
At some point, are y'all going to start looking at music as being part of the Arts Commission? Uh, you, you did a lot of, I thought, a lot of painting, a lot of arts. You're gonna invite like the Duncanville ISD Orchestra or Band?
We have music in everything.
Oh, okay.
Everything.
Perfect.
There's, uh, we've done two Juneteenth events, uh, we're planning future events, I think music's involved in everything.
Do you have a question?
Okay.
So, um, arts, it's a really broad, um, spectrum, like you mentioned, music, performance art, we got painting. Uh, specifically as it relates to public art, in particular lasting public art that, um, the entire community, um, might, might remember, can experience continually. What comes to mind is the mural project, right? Have the intersection of Cockroil Hill and Daniel Dell. Right, so we, I think it did two things, it created some lasting public art, but it also served as a light mediation for sometimes our, you know, our retaining walls. We live in this subtropical climate, over time, we start getting, you know, dismoed and it, it starts to look bad. But that was a fresh artistic approach of doing that. It's my understanding, the board collaborated with school district, with the city and so, um, I'd like to see, as you know, new board, as you guys develop this strategic plan or thinking about ideas to include into the large medium of art, public art.
Well, let me tell you. No, no, I'll tell you, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad to lean into that. First of all, uh, two of our commissioners, uh, Tim and Ann Perry, were, were part of the people that organized that, that event. The other thing is, uh, mural art is one of the things that we hear over and over, the residents wanna see, and local businesses wanna see. So what we're hearing a couple from the businesses is it's, it's very restrictive to do murals. Um, because you have to go through the, the sign control board, you have to go through Keep Duncan Beautiful, you have to go through all these things. So one of the first things we've done is we've asked city council to give everything associated, so signage is a, is a weight-finding activity. A mural is not, it's a piece of public art. So we've asked everything within the definition of public art to go under the purview of the Arts Commission. So the Arts Commission can make expeditious decisions on this. So right now, we have identified three organizations who have come to us and we said, we would love to have a mural on the building. So there's a really, if you get back home, if you're still thinking about it, Google Community Mural Program. So we're developing a community mural program. The idea is you wrap, uh, uh, community programming around this idea. So the Lions Club is one of the, one of the organizations that would let them have a mural. They have a school next to it, they face a park, there's a whole lot of ways to, and they have obviously a history of public service. So there's a way to build in community around that. There's also a way to bring tourists in this, so it's really interesting, the City of San Antonio, um, they partner with the local nonprofit organization that is a muraling organization. And what they do is they're trying to win the Guinness Book of World Records of, of public murals. And so right now they have like thirty-something, you can go and you can view them on Google Map or you can go and they'll set, set tours for them. Um, uh, Monty Anderson, uh, in the, the, the Wheaton Plaza, he's creating a, a, uh, a collaborative for tattoo artists. And I said, you know what, you could put some muralists in there, put some muralists in there and then you can, and then, uh, the, the, the everyday, the every seasons can provide all the, um, uh, uh, art supplies. And then Arts Commission fund this program, there's a great way to make this, make this activity. So if we could do two, three public murals, what I'm hoping is, because I've had private businesses come and they say, you know what, we can do our own mural, we should have some community partners to, to give a leg. So we're already leaning into it, but it's, but I love hearing that. Again, thank you guys, we appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, item C, Have Our Char Burgers Project Update, Jordan Dressel?
What, so, I'm really... Is that you calling the other day? We didn't know why, our extension that we got last time was through the twenty-sixth of August. So we're kind of, didn't know why we were, um, doing an update.
Can you give us your name and your address?
I'm Jordan Dressel from Have Our Char Burger, six oh six South. So, um, update, we are on track to finally get the sign up, so I should be able to meet the, uh, August twenty-sixth, um, extension date. It's just been crazy, we've done twenty thousand dollars worth of, uh, air conditioning work this summer, all three of our AC systems went down back to back to back to back. So, and, um, I don't know if any, we, we were actually, so I don't know if you guys know that gas station next door to us over there? It was our gas station, technically. Um, got into a huge legal issue with the owner of that property. It has been very money draining and everything else, all the work we did on that property initially and then all the legal stuff that we've been trying to, uh, to do and just settled out some of that, part of that recently, so that they can move forward with that seventy-six, which is our, our seventy-six contract that was basically taken from us by that landlord over there. So that's a whole nother story, it's just, it, it's just been a complicated year with, um, with that issue next door. And then coming into summer, right as we were, um, doing this sign and, and everything, got hit with bunch of AC problems back to back, it was a hundred degrees in the restaurant for, the week, had to close a couple of days and, and all that. So just kind of like getting caught up from that. Um, everything should be in order to get the sign up before the, um, extension date, which was I think August twenty-sixth, so. If something happens and they have any delays or anything like that, I can come let you guys know. Um, but the idea is to have that done be- before August, August twenty-sixth.
Before.
Before that, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So what do we, what do we do with the, with the gas station now?
That's a whole, we, we got it. No, man, we, you guys aren't doing anything with the gas station, it's just been a money suck for us, because we invested in that place and um, got into a sham deal with the landlord over there who owns eighty-five gas stations or something. He's got probably two hundred million dollars worth of property, doesn't live in this community, doesn't care about this community, in my opinion. Um, we did all the, initially that gas station had a bunch of, um, the li- the city had liens on it, it was, it was just a, it was a mess. So we did all the renovations, got all the liens off, they, they told us that we had to have a CO and had to be open to get approved for seventy-six or whatever branded gas station. So we did all the renovations, got open, got our CO, stocked it, got approved for the seventy-six contract, only for the landlord to hold our contract up for three years. And, uh, cause it, it's a landlord situation, so he has to sign off on the gas deal. Never signed our deal until we ended up being fed up with it. So now they're over there putting a seventy-six gas station over there, I assume is my contract, but. So it's just been, I just mentioned the gas station to mention that it's been a money suck for us as a small business. We, we really did that, cause it's right next door to us and we thought it'd be an easy turnaround, it's right next door, we care about this neighborhood and the corner looking, looking up to par and looking good and, um, it's just been a nightmare on that project. So, um, those, just accumulation of things, um, and then getting hit with these, all these AC issues, um, first of the summer, just put us a little bit behind, um, but we're finally recovering from that. It's not a hundred and ten degrees inside the building anymore, so, um, we should be, should be ready to go. The sign is built, it's just a matter of now finishing up the, um, the, the print job on the, on the, or whatever they call that, the lettering and all that stuff and then having it installed. So, yep, that's it.
Any questions, comments, observations from the board?
Yeah, I was just kinda curious, I go by your business quite a bit and been there and I was just curious why you didn't have any temporary signage put up front? Is there ordnance or just to think about it or?
Um, no, I mean, probably eighty-five percent of our customers are
Repeat?
Repeat, are repeat customers, so we're very fortunate in that regard, that most people know where we're at and that we're open. I mean, but the sign is so important, because that area is also getting a lot of new businesses, a lot of new people moving to the area. Um, so we've been, I mean, we've been fine business-wise, I mean, obviously certain, uh, times of year when it's getting dark earlier, things like that, we see a little downtick in, in business by not having the sign out there. Um, I think the, the sign really helps us right now to increase our business, as opposed to it decreasing our business, if that makes sense. We haven't seen much of a decrease in business, but I just think with the increased traffic on Clark Road, you've got the, the new Chipotle over there, everything coming in, I think there's some stuff coming in across the street on the Dallas side over there too, that they're about to build, so it's a great time to be very visible over there, you know, so. Um, that's the main reason, you know, it's just, we, we do a lot of repeat business over there, so, so we haven't done temporary signage. And I expected to have this done a long time ago.
Are we still on with the sign that was approved, I know that was?
Yeah, I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna not do the building, the sign on the building. Just the main sign of the street and the, the sign on the building is really a landlord dispute, that he doesn't want the sign on the building and I do. I'm not gonna waste any more time going back and forth about a sign on the building that we've never had. You know, we've had that sign of the street forever, I mean, that sign was probably You know, we've had that sign of the street forever. I mean, that sign is probably forty years old by itself. You know, so that we need, but the sign on the building was something that when I spoke to the last, um, economic director, um, or development director, we decided that that was something we could do, so we added it. Um, it's just not worth the dispute. Back and forth with the landlord on, on, on a sign that I feel like would be great for the building, but time-wise, it doesn't make sense to keep on going back and forth about it. I'd rather get our street sign up.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too. Yeah, me too. So it's like I said, the sign, the main, the big sign is built. The structure is built. It's just a matter of finishing it off.
Any questions, comments, observations?
Please do come back if you're not gonna make it in time.
Yeah, if there's any delays, it would, it wouldn't, it would be on theirs side on scheduling for getting the installation done. Uh, so I'll let you know, but the last I spoke to them, we felt like it should be able to get done, so we're just in the process of scheduling the final installation date and all that, so.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And number D, Star Transit update. This is Kim Britton, Deputy Executive Director.
Oh, um, Kim Britton and I live at seventeen oh five Jamestown in Forney. So, um, I'm here basically, believe it or not, we are a year, hi there. Um, a year, it's been, it's been a year. So it's nice, we always like to come back and give an update on kind of what we've done over the last year and then kind of where we're headed. So that's what we'll walk through real quick. I'm gonna review current services, review ridership data, and then also talk through some of the, uh, marketing strategies that we've done over the last year. So a little bit about who we are. We have been providing public transportation for over forty years. We have about a hundred, uh, staff of a hundred, about half of those are drivers. And we, um, operate about fifty-five, sixty vehicles, um, on a daily basis. We are based out of Kaufman County. Our headquarters are in Terrell, and we operate there as the designated rural transit district. And we are the fourth largest agency in this area behind Dart, DCTA, and Trinity Metro. However, we do not have a dedicated sales tax, um, like that's where they get their funds. We do not. And then we have, um, were an award that we always like to talk about is the Texas Transit Association Outstanding Rural Transit System in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and nineteen. So we, uh, our service area includes all of Kaufman County, all of Rockwall County, Sigaville, Bock Springs, Mesquite, Hutchins, De Soto, and then as of last summer, Cedar Hill and Duncanville. And then we do limited, very limited transportation. It's, um, Title III B through the area agency on aging. As what, which is a grant that we, um, received through them, uh, and then met some Medicaid transportation down there. We only have one vehicle that operates in Ellis County. So the current services that we operate in Duncanville is our, um, demand response. We also call this Dial Ride. This is our pre-booking service. You can book one business day up to two weeks in advance. Call our eight seven seven number. Schedule your trip. We come pick you up. It is curb to curb, so you just have to get yourself to the vehicle. Um, this service operates Monday through Friday, six, uh, six to six, and then we do have call center agents that are available Monday through Friday, um, eight to four. This is for anyone that needs public tran- or transportation. Um, you just have to be thirteen or above to ride by yourself. You can go anywhere you want to within the city and surrounding service area, so that list we spoke about. And then we do leave our service area for medical appointments. So if you need to go to the VA, Baylor, Parkland, Charlton, you can do that through our Dial Ride service. The fares are based on distance. Um, it's one between one and twelve dollars. And, um, it is half fare for our discounted category, which is sixty-plus veterans and disabled. So the most someone in that category will pay will be six dollars each way, but that's for a trip that's twenty-six miles plus. So, um, you, you're gonna stay more in that one to, one to four dollar range is typically what we see. And then, um, we do, children twelve and under do ride with the free, with paid fare. So, um, during COVID, our board, uh, changed that because we saw a lot of, um, single parents using transportation during COVID and became cost prohibitive because we're trying to get all their kids to daycare, um, and so, um, they did, and so they made that permanent. And we do have a client advocate program. This program doesn't cost our riders or you guys any additional money. It is, we do get grant funds. Um, basically it's staff that are, that are available to travel with clients. They can go to medical appointments, help open doors, help, um, fill out paperwork. They are not personal care attendants. They can't go into the appointment. They can't go, um, and help assist in the restrooms. They're just there really for, just to help. And we did add, a couple of years ago, we did add, uh, shopping because we had some visually impaired riders that were wanting to remain independent, and so we do provide people to go with them shopping. Um, the next service we have is our same-day service. This is exactly the demand response service. So you, you know, it's, it's just that it happens same day. So you can book by calling if you don't use a smartphone because we do have an app. This is what we call our Uber Lyft type service. Um, so, uh, there, like I said, we have an app available. This is same-day booking. So you can call or get on the app and book. If you know what, that you're gonna wanna go have lunch at noon, you can get on at eight o'clock through the app or call us and pre-book for the day. Um, or, or, uh, right away. You can also say you want somebody to come get you right now. And this operates Monday through Friday, six to six. The fare is a little bit different because it is, um, zone-based, and I'll show you a map here in just a minute. Um, so the fare is a little bit different. It's two dollars, uh, for that thirteen to fifty-nine, and then half, one dollar for that discounted category. Again, twelve and under are, uh, free. And then we can do promo codes. So I'll give you an example. We provide promo codes. We'll push out a press release around, um, uh, election day. And so then we give free rides for election day and they have a promo code they can use for this service. So if you guys have job fares, or if you have something that's going on from a city standpoint, an EDC standpoint, we can create a, a discount code and, and, and they can use center ride. Um, public transportation is shared ride. So this service is shared ride, so it's not like Uber and Lyft where you can do the one-on-one-off. You may get on and there may be several people on that vehicle with you, um, just because it is shared ride. And these are the zones. So when we launched last summer, the zone was just Duncanville city limits. But based on the requests we received from the city as well as the EDC and some, and Cedar Hill as well as De Soto, we increased that to the three-city zone. So now someone could go between the cities for two dollars or one dollar on the same-day service. And so, um, and then we also have, uh, the, the list of those other additional locations which fall outside of the zone. The Social Security Office was the one that we heard, um, during the meetings, um, specifically here in Duncanville. And, um, the Dart Redbird Transit Center, the Dart UNT Station, we also go to the Glen Heights Park and Ride, and then of, of course Cedar Hill and De Soto. Um, from our ridership standpoint, we have some room to grow. Um, you can see when we launched, we started out pretty strong. We were offering free fares, which always contributes to kind of a higher ridership. Plus, um, you can see also this month. Um, we had a, a, a big increase. We are working directly with the Duncanville Fieldhouse and are transporting their kids that go to their summer camp, and that happens July, early August. And so, um, we're taking them over to the Rex Center, the Library, skating, and so we're doing that Monday through Thursday. We're transporting kids for them. And so that's why you see that number jump up quite a bit. Um, and then just from an average wait time, you know, our goal is fifteen to twenty minutes, but based on the requests that we're receiving. Right now, we're getting up to that forty-eight minutes, so we really need to do some work on trying to get that, um, um, lowered. Go ahead.
So when the summer's over, you expect that trend line to go back down into the hundred to two hundred?
Yeah, we do, but yes and no. Um, uh, we feel like that, we feel like we, like I said, we've got some growing to do. We've been doing some marketing stuff here the last couple of months, so we're hoping that we'll see that not in, be more along the lines of that three hundred, four hundred mark, if not more than that.
Who pays for the kids to go?
Uh, they're paying. They pay the fare. No, that I do not know, that, yeah, the.
Theoretically.
They, we will get paid through Duncanville Fieldhouse. I don't know how they are collecting the, the fare.
But it's not city tax dollars and it's not federal tax dollars.
So, um, there's, it's kind of a trick question because yes, we do get federal funding for this, but there is a fare associated. And so they pay the fair portion of it. Yeah. And so it falls within with the operations that we're already doing, so it's not a, we're not adding vehicles because they could call and book a trip. Because it's during the day when we're offering services, we're just working with them to get it kind of scheduled to make it a little bit more easier because we're transporting. Like today, we transported over fifty kids, and so, um, we just needed to do a little bit of, of scheduling for that. So some of the marketing strategies, uh, when we first launched, we joined the Chamber of Commerce, which we'll continue to do, um, uh, every year. We did a ribbon cutting. We've done targeted Facebook and Instagram posts, press releases, community outreach. We've been to the senior centers several occasions. I've met with the school district on several occasions. I've even gone to, um, they have the, the classes for the kids that are transitioning out. The special needs kids that are transition, transitioning out of the school district, they're aging out. And so I went and showed them how to use the app so that they, they're getting jobs, and so then they know how to use the service to be able to do that. Um, we've done billboards and then we've also placed an ad in the Southwest Now Magazine. So just some of the social media, um, the ribbon cutting that we had the, the day we launched. This was, um, we also, when we launched, um, we did a direct mail and digital campaign. We sent out, uh, almost five thousand postcards to, um, sixty-plus veterans and disabled riders that, um, live in Cedar Hill and Duncanville. And so, um, that was, uh, along with that, we did the digital campaign. And so that fit like, that coincided with each other. When they got mailed out, they matched, um, email addresses. I mean, it's way more than than my brain comprehends, but, um, we had about eighteen hundred visitors based off, um, that camp, that campaign. And then this is the ad, um, that is currently running. It ran in the July, um, edition of the magazine and it'll be running in August. That goes to forty-four thousand residents as well as some other businesses in the area. Um, and then we also, uh, had a billboard which was off of, um, sixty-seven, and that ran in May. Any questions? I know I'm running through this really quick.
I will later next time.
Okay. Next. So, um, uh, every year, our Board of Directors approves a cost of service. This last year, the board approved a cost of service which is fifty-six dollars and seventy-five cents per hour. That's how we charge. You guys have twenty hours of service every single day, and so you were, um, should have received, uh, a cost of service letter. Um, and then, uh, that told you what, what the, what the budget was gonna be for FY twenty-five. So FY twenty-four, the cost to the city was a little over four thousand dollars a month. For FY twenty-five, it is going up, uh, to a little over forty-seven hundred dollars a month. Go ahead.
What is a typical subsidy the government provides to public transportation?
So for us, typically, it's sixty-forty, so they do sixty percent, and then the cities where we operate is forty percent. However, you guys, uh, received a grant through COG and right now it's eighty-twenty. So you guys are paying twenty percent of the total cost.
Yes, question. On a per-ride basis, how much would a government entity expect to spend?
So for like you guys?
Yeah, so like including the federal subsidy, we're paying sixty-nine dollars per ride. If you go back to the monthly ridership. And without the federal subs, uh, with the federal subsidy, we're paying thirteen dollars per ride. What should that look like in your mind?
I'll have to get back to you on that. I, I don't know.
Cause if, when the federal grant runs out, I mean, that's a significant expense if ridership doesn't go up.
Yes. So it'd be sixty per, you guys would be responsible for forty percent of that, yeah. But I can give you that information.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, yep. Oh, go ahead.
You had mentioned something that piqued my attention.
While you're thinking about it, you can also see the logos on this vehicle too. So that was part of the agreement, was that we did add the, the EDC logo on the vehicle.
What are y'all doing to try to drive up ridership?
So we're doing, um, advertising. I mean, that's, and we're attending, I mean, basically your grassroots marketing, and that's what we've seen that works. I mean, it, you have to get in front of people because a lot of times they don't understand what it is or who can use it. All of our vehicles are ADA compliant, so sometimes when they see our vehicles, they automatically think it's elderly disabled transportation. So you'll see a van. We've tried to kind of go a little bit smaller and more sleek from a van standpoint, because in that way they're not, they don't think that they're getting on, you know, public transportation. So, um, I wrote down the health fare that's coming that will, you know, we do those kinds of things so that we can get into people. And I'll tell you, um, what's driving ridership in Cedar Hill, um, is senior center transportation. You know, at one point they had a vehicle, they no longer do, so we are basically doing a hundred percent of their senior center transportation. So that is driving up, um, ridership, uh, quite a bit. Um, medical, um, uh, we do a lot of dialysis. Monday, Wednesday, Fridays are really busy for us in the mornings because we're doing a lot of the, a lot of that, um, transportation, so.
They were also one of the transportation sponsors for Leadership Day, uh, Dallas County Day. Yeah, uh, Dallas, Dallas Star Transit did, did, uh, transportation. And they did people from, we met here in Duncanville, and we went downtown. We had people from all of the Rancho Potos, one of those buses. And they got a lot of questions from the drivers and stuff in regards to where they could and couldn't go, and they didn't know. They didn't know, so they was, so it was a learning experience for them in regards to that.
And especially from an AD standpoint, I would encourage you guys, when you have new businesses that are coming to town, if you've got an HR meeting that you're having, please have us at the table, because a lot of times we're seeing, especially from a workforce standpoint, you know, you think elderly, disabled, you know, uh, uh, veterans' transportation, but we really do it all. And so we just need to make sure that we're at the table at those conversations because sometimes I feel like transportation's kind of an afterthought. Cause everybody drives, but you know, it, it opens up a whole new opportunity for employers. And they realize that they have access to public transportation, and we've seen that with FedEx. We've seen that with Kohl's in, um, just, in De Soto. They really took hold of the fact that they could now have a whole new pool of people because they're not having to recruit people that have transportation because it's being offered, and so.
Have y'all started planning it all for if the federal grant that you have runs out? What, what's the next step is, or do you expect that to get renewed?
Oh, it'll get renewed. It gets renewed. Yeah.
Will it get renewed for us? Uh, I know the program will get renewed. Will it get renewed for us?
Uh, yeah, oh, the, now the eighty-twenty will be done in, in, in year three, but the sixty-forty will get rid, that's automatic. That'll, that, we, I mean, we've been, we've had sixty-twenty and Mesquite over ten years. It, once you start transportation, the funds become available because they realize how important it is, and it would be really hard for us, especially for them to pull their funding and that something happened and we have to stop. You don't want that for sure. And it's just growing. I mean, there's the, um, especially from a public, public transportation standpoint, and you know, kind of sat the meetings and sees what, you know, it's, it's a hot topic right now because you guys didn't have, a year ago, you didn't have public transportation, so. And it usually takes about three years for it to take hold, and that's, that's an industry we're at standard, so, I mean, we've still got, we've got some time to, to grow, so. You know, hopefully next year we'll be standing here going, uh, we need to get, maybe need to up our money a little bit because we're maxed out, because at some point we will max out. I mean, there'll be a point where we won't be able to increase those numbers without adding some additional service, so. Good.
The capital cost to the city, can you talk about, um, the vehicles and what may be coming down the road in three years if ridership grows?
So from a capital standpoint, right now we are at a hundred percent. You guys don't cover any of that because we're able to get grant funds to cover our bus, our buses. We just recently got twenty-eight new vehicles. Um, so the vehicles is, is not, would not be something that would be passed on to you guys.
So if you need additional vehicles?
We would go get grand dollars and purchase those vehicles. That was a little bit of the holdup with the start of Duncanville was because we were needing to purchase new vehicles. And so when you're waiting on grand dollars and, and with COVID, I mean, it was tough to get vehicles. Um, it's getting a little bit easier, uh, so we're, like I said, we're, we got twenty-eight, we got five more coming, probably in the next month or so. So that's, right now, that's not, not an issue. And we actually will be adding some electric vehicles in this area, probably within the next two to three years as well. Good question.
Any other questions from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our briefings and presentations. Addendum four, consider approval of the DCTC minutes from the regular scheduled meeting held on June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four.
No approval.
Mr. Brew, in second in regards to the approval of the board meeting on the eve on, uh, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Any other questions, comments, or observations?
Comment. Um, before the board takes action on approving or, um, assuming approving the, the meeting minutes, I wanna take this opportunity to thank Mr. Brewer for putting together the meeting minutes. Uh, the meeting minutes, uh, uh, can take some time to put together. Uh, the meeting minutes, uh, uh, can take some time to put together. Uh, we are currently short staffed. Uh, Ms. Williams is no longer with the organization. So we have asked, um, Mr. Brewer in the meantime to, to step up and to provide, uh, assistance where needed. So he spent quite a bit of time, uh, last week in putting together the meeting minutes, making sure that the packet was, was in order. Putting the packets together, basically what you see here this evening is, is Mr. Brewer's, you know, hard work and long hours that he put into it. So I wanna, uh, take this moment and thank him for his, for his, uh, for his dedication.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank, thank you, Jeremiah. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Any?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item five, receive and discuss the following reports. Uh, D C E D C monthly budget reports from May twenty twenty-four. See sales and use tax comparison summaries from May twenty twenty-four. Duncanville Fieldhouse Sports Facilities Financial Status Reports from May twenty twenty-four. Main Station Duncanville Limited Partnership Monthly Financials for June twenty twenty-four. D C E D C and HOT Grants Awarded Financial Reports.
Thank you. Good evening. So those reports can be found on tab five of your, tab five of your packet. Uh, there's a series of, of reports. Um, what I would share with you is that, uh, moving forward, what our staff would like to do is provide you with a high level summary of these reports. Um, I would share with you that I'm not a financial expert, but there's a lot of numbers in, in these reports. And oftentimes you don't exactly know what it all means. And I think it would be helpful to provide you with just a, a high level summary, a high level snapshot of, uh, of these reports. Um, I would share with you that we have seen, as far as sales tax is concerned, we've seen a downward trend. We are approximately, uh, two percent, uh, less. We're, um, receiving less sales tax revenue than we were last year. Um, you know, we're, we're, we're competing against internet, internet retail. Um, and that certainly has had an impact on our, on our sales tax revenue. That's why, uh, we see it as important as nurturing and fostering our relationship with the business community and supporting them in every opportunity. That's why, you know, we provide, that we provide food this evening from a local establishment, a new establishment. Uh, because they are important to the community and to the livelihood of, of the city and the business community at large. Um, so, and I'd say, uh, it's important to shop local, uh, at every opportunity. Uh, Fieldhouse, we've seen a bit of a decline also in, in revenue. We have seen some, some maintenance issues with, you know, with the building. I know before, before the commission, there was a, um, a need to upgrade the mechanical equipment there.
Yeah, AC units.
AC units. So there's been quite a bit of expenses associated with the Fieldhouse. Along with that, there's some, uh, outstanding obligation that soon here will be paid off. So, um, those numbers will hopefully here soon be turning around and you'll see more, a lot more revenue coming in. But unfortunately you have these expenditures that come up and these obligations that have to be taken care of before we start seeing a more positive trend, uh, with, you know, with the Fieldhouse and its operations. Um, Hotel Tax Fund, uh, we recently had to do a budget amendment. Uh, because we had more, uh, applications, more fu, more requests for monies and more money allocated than was, uh, previously budgeted for. Uh, to a certain degree, that's, that's a good problem, uh, to have. But certainly we wanna recognize that we have these obligations that need to, to amend the budget accordingly. So, uh, moving forward, we've made some adjustments with the budgets. And we hope that we are, uh, anticipating, uh, doing a better job of anticipating how much money is gonna be asked for in the next fiscal year and not be in a situation where we have to, uh, request a budget amendment. But again, we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. Um, but hopefully we don't have to, um, be in the same predicament, predicament the next fiscal year. Um, you see as far as the, um, main street, uh, statements, they, uh, let me see on page, and bear with me, this report doesn't have a, a page number. Uh, but you will see their, uh, their revenue and expenditures. Uh, I think in page two of the report provided, you will see a total income of approximately two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars and a total expense of about a hundred and sixty thousand with a net income of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Uh, that is all I have, uh, to share with, with the board at this time as, as it relates to financials.
Any questions, comments, observations in regards to reports you have received?
Oh, and thank you guys for including these last two reports for the active projects, the active and sub projects. I think that's more telling than anything else that's in this.
Yeah, I see. Or I mean, I turned.
I'm talking about.
Allocated budget.
Yes, I'm talking about the status. Yes. There's a wonderful reporter that I didn't know I wanted. So thank you for that. Um, I do have a question on it though. I have a number of these projects that don't have a P O number listed. Is there a, we need to get P Os in place? Are we gonna come to those funds? Do not accidentally allocate them somewhere else?
Somewhere else.
Well.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm still learning the budget thing, but I can tell you this, if it's already been, um, if it's on here, it's already been encumbered. It's already decided.
Got it.
And so either we're actively, just like you said, Ms. Williams is not with us anymore. So she's the only one who usually does the, some of these. Um, so it's not gonna be like, we're already over, let's put it that way. We're already a little bit over, but we gotta take care of those. So, yeah. But it's already put aside. It's not where we have to go and get more money or anything.
But that's essentially what happened last year.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, we approved it, but we didn't.
We approved it, but we didn't have that.
Correct. It was shown on, on the accounting.
Right.
And that's one of the reasons why I asked Ms. OT to make sure this is in every packet from here out. Because you need to see what you have ahead of time so that you're not over. We know we're not over allocated. Cause you wanna help the community, but at the same time, we don't make sure.
You don't wanna bankrupt ourselves.
No one said that word.
You can't remember the last question.
It is, well, exactly. Yeah.
I don't know what the last word was.
Question? Yes, on the allocation, um, do you guys have a column for expiration of the award?
Really?
Oh, good. Good question. It is six months after it's been awarded. Are you coming for them to get it or for them to utilize it?
For them to utilize it.
It's six months after the, is that right? Three months?
Six months. There's only, should be two.
Unless we extend it.
Yeah, that's an extension.
Yeah, they have a couple.
We're in, uh, Delany Investments, the five eleven. Yeah, I think those are the ones I heard. D squared should be closed down. Started.
You can make sure to.
Can you insert a column and do the six months and then adjust anybody that's?
Yeah, so we can include it, the reports going forward.
Can it also be, can also note whenever it's been extended?
Yeah.
And then I don't know who's gonna be tracking with the, the folks. I don't know how you guys do that on your, it was that, in our, to find out who's the liaison, I guess.
The liaison for, uh, all of us kind of, we all work together. Um, Jeremiah does the, um, intake and the, the, uh, coordinating of the applications. And Jennifer works with us with the, with the, uh, finances and getting our budget together. And we work as a team to make sure that the applications fit the, fit the needs of our community.
I guess let me explain what I was thinking.
Yes.
They do a good job. Unlike have our burger, like, is there a direct contact that they're always dealing with you? Or whoever that says, you know, I'm still working on it or I got it coming or we got this scheduled and just to put in the updates?
Mostly it would be Jeremiah. And then, you know. So we're mostly Jeremiah.
We can, uh, put together a tracker. At least just pretty good. She's been helping me develop a tracker to, uh, compartmentalize. Just make sure we're capturing everything that the applicants, anyway, and then any other needs. We'll, we'll make sure to include that in the next, in the coming reports as well.
Cause as they come up for expiration, hopefully someone's reaching out and saying, hey, what's going on with your project?
Oh.
Like more supply. I don't know what's going on with that.
We do like, we're, we're developing a trip campaign in which after they do their application, we're reaching out to them every so often and saying, hey, how you doing? What you need from us? And so it goes on for like the next twelve months to make sure that they're consistently inside of our family, our community. They know what's going on.
But we don't wanna make too much of a bug on them.
Right. It's cool, it's like a three, six, nine thing, three months, six months.
That's what's stuck in my head now.
Yes, sir. One more thing, and Ms. Day actually reminded me that I left about and I left out. Uh, moving forward, what we'd like to do is, um, every so often have a representative from each, um, possibly department or organization here to the meeting to provide the board with a more detailed summary. We'll provide on a monthly basis the, what I'll call the high level executive summary of the reports. But say for example, maybe next month, we have a representative from the Fieldhouse. He would talk about visitors, any other.
We've talked about that before.
Yeah, but we started making our rounds and maybe getting more of a, more of a habit of, of doing that. You know, maybe there's a lot of good information here. We take a quick look at it and provide a high level summary. But there may be questions, concerns that the board may have that we may not be ready or able to answer. But that representative definitely will be.
Yeah, we, like I said, we, we talked about that before.
Okay.
And I think that, I think that's a great idea.
And we'd also talk about that, including Craig into, uh, some of these meetings. Craig, specifically member Fieldhouse, we talked about that as far as bringing them into our umbrella. But he's still gonna be separate, but you know, he needs to be part of the, the meetings.
Do we have to approve these? I don't think that's a.
No, it's just a report, to my knowledge.
Yeah, Mr. President, if you'll let our team, I wanna make a motion to table items six, seven, eight, nine until after closed session. So we can go straight to public hearing on those items. I don't wanna consider them for.
The, the orders for. They are here.
And eight.
Yeah, it's eight.
Uh, we have a public hearing on.
Oh, yeah.
Those items.
I guess I hear a few more questions or something. For the break, the Methodist Church too.
Oh, we didn't have that one earlier. Okay, let me amend that. Make a motion to table six and s, six, seven, and.
Six and seven.
Six and seven until after executive session. Since we've already had a presentation on those items. Yep, and then I will.
Perpetually. So with that being said, do we need to go straight to number eight?
Well, we need a motion to table six and seven. And we need a second.
Yeah, I need a second. I need a second table. How's coming six and seven? Second. It's been moved and properly seconded in regards to table items number six and seven since they've already, already been discussed after executive session. Any other questions, comments, or observations? Hearing nine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay. Um, item number eight, discuss and consider possible actions regarding a request of sponsorship assistance by First United Methodist Church located four oh three South Main Street, Duncanville, Texas, seven five one one six. Does anyone from the church? If you have minds, tell them your name and address.
My name is Betty Dunn and my address is seventeen thirteen Turtle Pond Drive, DeSoto. This is not a request from First Methodist Church. Uh, this is a request from Property Improvement Program, which was begun by First Methodist Church into a prop, into a, uh, partnership with the city of Duncanville. And we began this program in two thousand sixteen. The last, uh, weekend in April, first weekend in May, every year we go out and re, repair the exterior of homes, clean up yards, build and repair fences. Uh, we do not go in the, on the inside of the homes, just the outside. Then again in the fall, uh, September, last weekend, September, first weekend in October, we do the same thing. We take applications during the year. Um, right now we are taking applications for our fall session, which is September twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and then October fourth, if I believe it is. Um, we have six applications so far. We started the application process the first week in June and the deadline is August the fifteenth. Uh, we have received sometimes as many as twenty-five applications. Uh, we, we visit the homes, we visit the, the property owner, we talk to them. They have to tell us why they need the help. Uh, these are, uh, people who have circumstances that they seemingly have lost control over. They can't, they're widows, widowers, um, people who have lost their child, people who are on social security only, people who have, um, medical problems that they simply cannot do the work. The city, uh, sees to it that we have porta potties at each project property that we work on. They supply water for us. They, uh, knock off any fees that we, um, um, not fees, but permits, thank you. Permits that we might have to get for building a fence or something that we're going to build onto the house. They knock those back. Um, they, uh, Alex makes signs for us to put in the yards that say, pardon our mess, we are property improvement program working on this house. And the, the sign stays for the full two weeks that we are, uh, involved and working there. It is all volunteer. It started out with, uh, volunteers from First Methodist Church. It has gradually grown into being volunteers from employees of the city of Duncanville, city councilmen, uh, people from, uh, the civic organizations in town. Um, First, uh, First Christian Church, Holy Spirit Catholic Church, uh, Grace Place Church of Christ. We even have some volunteers who come in from a, uh, lodge in Dallas. So, and I invite all of you to come and help us on the September twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth and October fourth and fifth. We meet in the parking lot at First Methodist Church at eight, at seven thirty in the morning. And we're out in the, in the properties by eight. Uh, work all day Saturday and all day Sunday. And we are always able to finish our projects in the two weekends. We, uh, pray every time that we're starting to do this because it always rains in April and in, in September. And so far we have never had to call anything off. We've had shorter workdays. In the spring, we worked at eight properties. The most we've ever worked at for a session has been twelve. Um, we usually have, uh, eighty-five plus volunteers. Some can work one weekend, some can work only one day. Uh, you can, you can come on the weekend that are the day that you can work. These are our shirts, as you can tell. And, uh, anytime, if any of you want to come, you can get my email address from, uh, Mr. Herrera R. from, uh, Jeremiah. I'd be glad to find you out. We, uh, have requested three thousand dollars in fund. Um, we are a five oh one C three and we get some funding from other places. But it only is used for, uh, supplies, fueling supplies. And thank you very much. If you have questions, I'm ready to answer questions.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Has the city sponsored this before or the EDC?
Pardon me?
Has the city or the EDC sponsored?
The EDC has not. Uh, this, this, the, this, the help the city gives us is like I said, they, uh, knock off permit fees. Uh, see to it that we have porta potties. We do not have to pay for those. Oh, Public, uh, Republic Services comes out and makes special pickups, especially on the first two days that we work. Because we pull out, we tear off siding off of houses. We tear, we put torn, worn out fences out in the yard. We pull out trash out of yards and put it out. So the city has been a very good partner and, uh, we, uh, up until, I think now, Juanita Gutierrez has been our go-to person for, uh, seeing that we have help and what we need from the city. So.
And our agreement would be with what, five oh one C three?
Property Improvement Program. PIP days because it's easier to say, we're having PIP days instead of property improvement days. Yes.
It's with the LLC. So they ask us for three thousand? Is that just for the whole year?
Uh, no, I think then the idea was that maybe the three thousand now and then come back another, another part of the year. If, if you, if you do this twice a year. We have, um.
Cause your grant says three thousand per year. So should that be per?
I didn't fill that.
Per season?
Yeah, I didn't fill that out, so. Yeah, I didn't fill that out, so, uh.
Per spring and fall?
Per spring and fall, yes.
And then?
Members of First Methodist Church supply an enormous amount of water for us, the city also supplies water and Gatorade. Uh, we have, uh, volunteers in our church who make cookies and we, uh, Steve Martin has always been really good to see that we have lunch on the days that we work. Popeyes always furnishes the lunch and, uh, Ex- Chicken Express and, uh, another chicken place over on Royal, we usually have chicken on the weekends that we work. The last two days, we usually have fewer volunteers, we have less work to do, and, uh, we have people in First Methodist Church who, uh, see to it that we have a meal.
So I think you mentioned you have six applications from Duncanville residents so far, but maybe in the past, or you've had up to twenty-five?
Yes, now, last, last, a year ago in fall, um, it was allowed, somebody at the city allowed this to be announced over, uh, a radio station, without letting us know that they were doing that, and we had fifty applications, and it was, some came in from Fort Worth and some came from Granbury, and you know, it's for Duncanville residents only. And here's where Juanita Gutierrez, uh, really stepped up and helped us, because she contacted the people who were out of the city and told them this is for our Duncanville residents only, but all those others that were Duncanville, we went to visit. Uh, we start scheduling them, uh, latter part of August, we'll be going out, and it's a, it's, it's, uh, a hard pulling, uh, decision to make, uh, when we have to tell somebody, I'm sorry, we just cannot work for you this time. Uh, sometimes it's because maybe they don't fit the criteria, and this, this sounds, um, this doesn't sound very nice, but you've got to, it's got to be somebody who simply does not have the money to take care of what they, what needs to be done. And we do have people that apply when they find out it's free, we have people apply who have a nicer house than I do, you know, so, I mean, it's just, um, but we do have to, we have to just take whatever we think we can handle the year, it depends on what is, what they need done, if they need a lot done on their house and a lot done in the yard, or so we can, like in the spring, we only did five of those properties, and most of them were repairing fences and trimming some trees. We used to cut, have trees cut down, but that has become so expensive, it's just, we've decided not to cut down large trees, it has, we'll trim branches that our volunteers can do.
So, question, so the, the request is for improving aesthetics to a home, so that includes like supplies? That you might be building supplies, like siding?
Siding, nail screws, caulk, fencing, uh, we, sometimes we replace screens on, on windows, we replace doors, uh, anything on the outside of the house that our volunteers can handle, we will, we will tackle, and we will, um.
So who covers, um, the cost of hand tools and rakes and chubbers or circular saws?
Sometimes the Republic Services furnishes gloves for us, when we run out of gloves, we'll tell them at the beginning of the session, we hate, we need more gloves, if you can give us some. First Methodist Church has a trailer that is full of, uh, rakes and, rakes and hoes and drills, and, uh, we do, we have a, uh, an electric, electric saw, uh, sawhorses, and then volunteers bring their own and use them and take them home at night, and then take them back home.
And then do you guys use the community trailer for tables and chairs?
No, no, we, uh, we take, uh, chairs from First Methodist Church, I mean, tables from First Methodist Church, and everybody brings their own lawn chair to sit in under, whenever they're getting to take a break or take, drink some water.
Um, it has a trailer that you can bring for the site, so it's got tables and chairs.
Who does?
The parks.
Oh, okay. Uh, the only time we really need a table is at lunchtime, we, we put, we put the snacks on the table out under a tree and put our chairs around, and we don't, we don't encourage them to sit a whole lot, you know, we don't want them to work, but at snack time, at snack time, or take a little rest and get, be sure you're hydrated, drink some water, and we sit on, in our lawn chairs or on porches and eat our lunch and get back up and work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
If you don't mind, I absolutely intend to support this, but I don't think we can vote on this, because it's not listed as an agreement with Public Improvement Program, it's listed as an agreement with First United Methodist Church.
I don't know how that happened.
It wasn't your fault, however, our managing director has the authority to do a three thousand dollar sponsorship of his own accord, and I'm just stating publicly now that I would support that, should he decide to do that on our behalf. But I don't think we can take action on this today, we the board.
We the board.
Staff absolutely could if they felt.
Yeah, so.
If they felt so inclined to do that, just putting that out there for the benefit of.
I will publicly say I would support that as well, but we, but he's correct, because the, the agreement is actually on our agenda. It says something different than what, what you need for that to be.
Right, right. I, I want to, just one other little thing I want to say, and that is that these, these, uh, Duncanville citizens that we're able to help are so grateful, and, and emotionally grateful, and we go out, we do this, we start the project every year in faith that we're going to be able to do this, we, actually, we start in faith that somebody will be glad to have us in their yard, but in faith that we can do the work, and then we're hoping to be a blessing to the people with it we work for, and we are just multitude of blessings received ourselves from, from doing this work, and again, I invite you to come and help us.
Thank you, ma'am. So would you actually?
Make a motion to table, item number eight, definitely.
Do I have a second? It's been moved in property second in regards to tabling, item number eight, uh, referring over to the staff in regards to the grant for the.
P I P.
Yeah, P.
PIP days.
Uh, any other, any other questions, comments, or observations?
Just want to say one more time that I absolutely think staff should feel inclined to exercise their discretion on this.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, I would need to get that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Item number nine, discuss and consider possible actions regarding an application for incentive or grant assistance by First Peter Four and Ten, uh, LLC, located at one two two three Crestdale Drive, Suite Eight, Duncanville, Texas, seven five one three seven.
Hi, guys.
Good evening.
Good evening, uh, Ty Thompson, thirty thirty seven Ridley Lane, Duncan, or Middlelothian, Texas now, uh, this is my wife Carolyn. And, uh, so we own tech chefs, we're electrical contractors, uh, and I'm a master electrician. And we have this building here in Duncanville that we recently purchased, uh, it's an older building, uh, built in the sixties, and definitely needs some love, but our plan is to rejuvenate the building and just make that area look better. A part of rejuvenating that area would be to paint the building and also repair concrete, uh, in the parking lot. Is, uh, some of our plans down the road is to build an additional building in that parking lot, uh, that could potentially increase, uh, you know, tax dollars for the city of Duncanville. Uh, I don't think we have many slides.
I don't, I don't think either, just.
Sure, thank you. And so we, uh, we, I believe, uh, applied for two grants, uh, one grant for painting, and then one grant for, to do concrete work. Uh, and ours is, uh, pretty straightforward, just, uh, have an older building, wanting to rejuvenate that building and make that part of Duncanville look better. That part of Duncanville could use some love, um, we're behind Crawford Electric Supply, right off of, uh, sixty-seven in between Daniel Dale and Cochran Hill, uh, kind of a more industrial part of Duncanville.
You can, you can see us from the highway still, we have, I don't know if it's on there, but our building's like this bright green color.
It's beautiful green.
We purchased it that way, we really want to improve the, the appearance of it, we already invested money in it ourselves to help rejuvenate it. Um, we, um, have three suites there, we run our electrical contracting business out of one suite, the other two suites we rent out, so there is a seamstress who does receive customers at the property, and there's a lot of broken concrete that we want to fix up on that property, especially with customers coming in, and then the other suite, uh, HVAC repair guy, um, so just, we need, that parking lot's huge, and there's a lot, I don't know, there's pictures on there, but there's a lot of really bad cracks in the concrete, we purchased it like this, we want to improve it. Uh, we bought it in twenty twenty-two, I think it was, so we, over the last couple of years, put a lot of money into it, but we just need some help getting this to where it needs to be.
I've heard the green described as an insane asylum green. That's not a Alicia quote, uh, but, um, but it, yeah, so a pretty straightforward deal, we're just trying to rejuvenate.
Have y'all run the pavement by the fire marshal, whatever you're planning to do with the pavement, by the fire marshal to make sure it's signed off on already?
Yes, yes, and so, I've, um, is it Steve Wakelin, I believe, I've spoken to him, and, uh, about improvements we plan to make, yes, and we would just have to, of course, re-strike the fire lane, you'd be happy.
Is the seamstress and the other tenant that you got, are they from somewhere else, or they are already in Duncanville, or?
Uh, actually, the seamstress was in Dallas, and then they relocated to Duncanville, and the HVAC guy, he was in Duncanville, and he just moved from a different part of Duncanville.
Well, one more question, is the city requiring you to do concrete, or do you want to do concrete?
Uh, we, as opposed to like another? Yeah, I've consulted with several professionals, uh, and I looked at potentially just doing like an asphalt overlay, and every professional that I consulted with that has a lot of experience in it, I said, please don't do that, you're just gonna make a huge mess, because if the substrate is not solid, that asphalt is gonna fail.
The, uh, concrete sub- contractor we want to go with is also located in Duncanville, so that's a top bus.
Any other questions, comments, or observations?
Okay, thank you.
I did have one question. Need signs?
Uh, we, we do have one sign on our suite already, and it's.
Tell your tenants to.
Is the other tenants?
Potentially for the other tenants, yeah. Thank you very much, thanks for having us, guys, you have a great day.
I'm gonna show one of that, that's an asphalt road, leading right up to that concrete park.
Right up to it, and then you want a concrete park.
Want y'all make your decision?
I'll make a motion to table item number nine until after executive session.
Do I have a second? It's been moved in property second in regards to tabling, uh, item number nine, until after executive session. Any other questions, comments, or observations? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Item number ten, conduct a public hearing of the following items. A, item number six, of July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four D C E D C agenda, Pink Diamonds Community Bike Ride. All in favor, open for, open. Um, item B, item number seven, of the July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four D C E D C agenda, Duncanville Arts Commission. C, item eight, of the July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four D E D C E D C agenda, First United Methodist, no, we table. Okay, for the First United Methodist Church. And D, item nine, of the July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four D E D C agenda, for the First Peter Four and Ten Limited, Limited Partnership, Limited LLC.
I'll move to open the public hearings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in property second in regards to opening up the public, the public hearings, all in favor, say aye.
Sorry, so that sign of day being D?
We have to, we have to, this is on the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. That being said, anyone in, anyone who wants to speak for or against any one of these items? Hearing none, intending to motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in property second in regards to closing of the public hearing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Executive session, in accordance with the Texas Government Code of the D C E D C, shall convene and to close executive session pursuant to the following sections, section five five one dot zero seven one, consultations with city attorney or special counsel regarding the pending or con- uh, concept, principal litigation. In accordance with the Texas, Texas Government Code, the D C E D C shall convene and to close executive session pursuant to the following sections, section five five one dash zero eight seven two, deliberations regarding economic development negotiations to deliberate the offer of a financial or other incentives to a business prospect. Uh, D E D C, uh, rules and procedures, D C monthly board meeting schedule, Pink Diamonds Community Bike Ride, First Peter Four and Ten Limited, uh, LLC, Duncanville Arts Commission, and Harvard Burgers. Intending motion to go into executive session.
So moved, second.
It's been moved in property seconded, all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Make a motion to reconvene back into open session?
So moved, second.
It's been moved in second in regards to moving back into open session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Item number thirteen, take any necessary appropriate actions as a result of the close, of the closed executive session. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion that we approve a request for sponsorship assistance by Pink Diamonds Community Bike Ride, at five thousand dollars on a reimbursement basis for security, advertisements, and supplies based on the submitted budget.
Do I have a second? It's been moved in property second in regards to approval of five thousand dollars for the Pink Diamond Community Bike Ride, with the conditions listed, any other questions, comments, or observations? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Board, is there another, is there another pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion for the, um, application for incentive and grant assistance by First Peter Four Pole and Ten LLC, located at the twelve twenty-three Crestwood Drive, Suite Eight, Duncanville, Texas, that we, uh, approve an incentive and, um, grant, uh, reimbursable for their forty-nine thousand dollars for concrete, twenty-two thousand dollars for paint, totaling, um, a maximum seventy-one thousand dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in property second in regards to approval of the First Peter Four, Four Ten LLC, any other questions, comments, or observations? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Any other pleasure, any other pleasures for the board?
I will make a motion to approve the, uh, application, uh, purchase of a sponsorship of the Duncanville Arts Commission, an amount of eight thousand dollars for two, um, arts and business mixes.
Second.
Clarification question, is that four thousand per event, for a total of eight thousand?
Correct, four thousand per event for a total of eight thousand.
Any other questions, comments, or observations? It's been moved in property second in regards to approval of the Duncanville Arts Commission grant for eight thousand dollars, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. All opposed, same sign. Okay, I believe that's all we back, uh, all, all the actions we've taken in the executive session. Um, move for adjourned?
So moved.
It's been moved in property second it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.